Individually, I thank you Father for these men and women who has given their time for our county. To they may operate in such a fashion. That others that might see it will know that it is happening because of your presence. I pray for their health. Pray Father for their mindset that you will always be present there. Thank you Father for the opportunity that they give others to sit in their seats. Bless now I pray those that will come before this committee. We ask now Father that you are blessed this day. Keep us always in your care. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome Doug Berry from the Chamber of Commerce Industrial Development Board and Leon Sheehan from the Public Defender's Office. And I think his daughter might be here shortly, but her is here. Call the roll please.
Alfred.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Mason. Ledford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
It's thirteen present and one absent.
I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So move.
Second. Open for discussion. There being no discussion, call the roll please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. We'll now move to the report from the county mayor. Mayor Davis please.
Thank you Mr. Chairman and good afternoon everyone. And yes, we have a guest with us today, a mayor for the day. Addison Sheehan. She's joined with her parents Leon and Stacia Sheehan. Addison is twelve years old and an upcoming seventh grader at Ocoy Middle School. Is that correct? I asked if she wanted to say anything and she said in for the sake of time, knowing how long-winded some of you were that she would refrain from making any comments today. But no, she said she didn't have anything to say. I told her about the last time we had a mayor for a day and they made a big speech about not raising taxes, but it wasn't seasonal for that speech today, so. You have in front of you a reappointment for the nine-one-one board. This is Lyle Swartzell. He was only appointed three or four months ago, but it was to fill out a term and I respectfully ask that you approve his, confirm his appointment for a full four-year term.
So move by Commissioner Winters, second by Commissioner Slater. Open for discussion. There being no discussion, call the roll please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins. Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor, none opposed and one absent.
Thank you, appreciate that. You also have two resolutions, I think they're stapled together in front of you. Can vote on together if you'd like, but a little over a year ago, we were actually awarded, or at least told that we were getting a $2.1 million grant from the state. It's federal money that was left over from our last tornadoes. And we were to put together a plan of how we were going to spend it, which we did. A year later, it's still ongoing, but they have asked us to get these two resolutions approved today. There's no commitment on the county's part. It's a non-competitive bid, 100% grant. But by splitting it into two resolutions, they've assured us that they will be having a contract to us in the very near future so that Troy can get his $760,000 part of the grant almost, or very soon at least. So if you approve both of these, they're just basically authorizing me to sign the paperwork to get those grants and to sign the contracts when they do come in.
To the county attorney, should we not vote on them individually?
Yes, that's what I would recommend doing.
Okay.
I make a motion. On the first one? That's $225,000, is that the one you want?
Do it whichever way you want, as long as you do both of them.
Got a motion on it, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I see.
Call the roll please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, the next one is 1.3, uh, $1,306,200. I'll make that in form of motion, thank you.
So I have a second. Open for discussion. Being no discussion, call the roll please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you, appreciate that. The first one, the 760 goes to the EMA for their move to the new location. The second one, the remaining of that $2.2 million grant is the 1.3 that will be going. It'll be coming through Bradley County, but it's awarded to Salvation Army, City Fields, Habitat. I believe are the three that are getting portions of that one when they ever come in, so. Going toward housing for the East Cleveland area is what those are for. Thank you, that's all I have unless someone has a question for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move along to the consent agenda. Do I have a Commissioner Goins? Do I have a second Commissioner Hughes on the second? Open for discussion. There being no discussion, call the roll please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes. It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. We'll now move to the reports from the committees and our districts. We'll start on our left with Commissioner Rogers please.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, nothing to report today, just do want to welcome the Madam Mayor here today. And we hear about you all the time from your dad and hear about how amazing of a young golfer you are and how great you are in the community and all the things that you do. So welcome in today. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Ledford please.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, all is well in the sixth district, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Slater.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Goins? Thank you, Commissioner Thompson please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Build and Land Committee had a meeting today and what we voted on was a committee district report, not what we voted on, district report. Mr. Chairman, the Build and Land Committee met this morning and voted to recommend approving the clearing and taking down the bank at the property line at Minus Road for our facility approximately 32 feet by 200 feet and referring it to the Finance Committee for funding. And if the funding is approved, then move forward. I put this in recommendation in form of a motion.
Do we need? Don't need a motion, I don't believe, it just moves over to finance.
What you want to do?
Was just.
Lori, will you put that on the finance agenda?
We got it on the finance.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gilbert.
I have nothing to report.
Commissioner Winters please.
Uh, thank you Mr. Chairman. I just had a brief discussion with our new chairperson and asked if our assistant attorney could speak, her dad. And she said, no, he's out of order today. Uh, but I think she, she will be a great leader in our community and I know her dad is a great leader already today. Good to have him here today. There were two beautiful, big beautiful bills that were generated several years ago now. One is the 60 Highway Bill. And through the work of T.DOT and the city and county, we have a beautiful road that's now been, been built and we've we've dedicated it. Now we have to make sure the speed limit signs are up. But it is, it is a great accomplishment and congratulations. And thanks to Dan Howell and Kevin Raper and Adam Lowe for their leadership on that. The second part of those beautiful bills were the legislation that was generated by our governor when he asked for the state, the month of July to be a time of prayer. Time of prayer for our nation. It is, you're looking at, looking on your phone today. If you're looking at TV at all this week, you see the challenges that's in our world. And it's great that the state of Tennessee is praying for not only our state, but for our nation as the eloquent prayer was presented by Pastor Robinson. We appreciate that, we appreciate that we get to do that. But the state of Tennessee is in prayer. And we were able to do that last Saturday, the mayor was there representing our county. I was there, several other leaders were there. And we had that legislation actually read from the courthouse, which that was a part of the beautiful bills that have been presented in Tennessee. And thanks to our legislators. And those three legislators were a part of our Bradley County Commission. One was assistant to the mayor and two of them were seated county commissioners that are now being legislators. And we salute them and thank them for what we see in Tennessee is three beautiful, big beautiful bills. Thank you.
Commissioner Collins please.
Nothing to report others than say welcome. Addison, I know you're excited about the new school year, we're glad to have you here. Thank you, that's all I have.
Commissioner Blake please.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I also want to welcome our mayor for the day. Appreciate all the hard work you've been doing. What else the other thing, oh, Leaf Academy. We had a chance to go over to the Leaf Academy the other day, it was well organized. And those young people, from what I understand with their curriculum, had a lot to learn and I was glad to see them march through the auditorium there. Standard of attention, they did a fantastic job, so I wish them well. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Alfred please.
Second district doing well, sir.
Commissioner Hughes?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report other than to welcome our mayor for the day.
Commissioner Beatty?
I'd like to welcome our new mayor today, she's doing a real good job. She lives out in my area. And I met her parents a few times, but I had never met her.
Is that all, sir?
Yes.
All right. We'll move on down to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda, Commissioner Hughes? Do I have a second Commissioner Rogers on the second? Open for discussion. Being no discussion, call the roll please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. We'll now move along to agenda item A. Commissioner Slater.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution approving a payment in lieu of taxes, schedule and delegating authority to enter into a pilot agreement. Uh, and you can, those, the information can be found on pages five and six. I place this in the form of a motion.
Do I have a second? Second on Commissioner Goins, open for discussion. Call the roll please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes. It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item B, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, this is a motion for $3,335 for, from the Public Water Fund for the county share of the Moore Circle Road Waterline Extension Project. This is from the last budget, but we had to bring it into this budget. So I'll put that in form of a motion, thank you.
Second.
Who was the second? Bill, Commissioner Winters on the second. Open for discussion. Call the roll please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins. Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes. It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item C, Commissioner Alfred.
Yes sir, thank you. Motion to award the duty handgun to Lieutenant Cheryl Holloway upon retirement, uh, August 21, 25. See page seven. I put that in form of a motion, ma'am, sir.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Goins on the second. Open for discussion. Call the roll please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item D, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution to rezone from Forestry Agricultural Residential District to General One, General Industrial I-One District, property located at 3410 Benton Pike and identified by Tax Map 051 Parcel 036.03. You can see this on page eight and nine of your agenda packet, I place this in form of a motion.
We will now, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We will now go into a public hearing regarding this rezoning request. When you are recognized, please keep your remarks germane to the resolution at hand. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this request? There being no one that would desire to speak, is there anyone on the commission?
Mr. Chairman, uh, just do want to mention that the Bradley County Regional Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning request. And if anyone does have any questions, Bentley is here today.
Thank you. There being no comments, call the roll please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes. Thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item E, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution to rezone from Forestry Agricultural Residential District to Rural Commercial C-One District, property located at 874 South McDonald Road and identified by Tax Map 071, a portion of Parcel 079.00. You can see this on pages 10 and 11 of your packet and I place this in form of a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Commissioner Thompson on the second. We will now enter into a public hearing regarding this rezoning request. When you are recognized, please keep your remarks germane to the resolution at hand. Is there anyone present who would, wishes to speak for or against the request? Anyone? Yes, please sir. You don't mind giving your name and address, sir?
I'm Gerald Mullins. I live at 818 South McDonald Road, McDonald, Tennessee, right next door to this building. What's the forestry deal? Y'all need to explain what you're doing. What's the forestry act? What? Agriculture. What's the forestry deal over here? That you rezoned it at, right there, read it right there.
Sir, it currently is zoned as forestry, agriculture and residential.
Mine says, mine says agricultural.
Your property yourself?
My property tax, yes. Don't say nothing about forestry, I don't know. Y'all say one thing and you do something else. I know what I pay my taxes on, it's on agriculture. Not no forest. Ma'am, here with y'all, y'all's the one that runs the show, not me.
I believe it's on FAR, forestry, agriculture and residential, sir. I think if I'm not correct, my correct, uh...
Says here, yes. Your residence.
This has already been through the planning commission, sir, and along these lines. I, I don't fully understand where you're coming from, but I, I do appreciate your comments.
Right, right. Okay, now another question, who's all these other people over here with these gentlemen? Would they introduce theirsself? Well, some of them ain't, don't even live down there.
I don't, they haven't chose to speak, sir. They can speak if they want after you, then we'll find out. Right now, they're just, everybody in Bradley County is welcome to come to the, to the county commission, the same as you are. And they have not chosen to speak, so when they speak, they will recognize them.
Okay. All right, that's that's said, all I'm gonna say, 'cause you've heard it three times in a row, you know?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Michael Kinsey, I live at 1821 Sim Goodwin Road. This building joins my property. Uh, we're wanting to, uh, first of all, I've, I've been praying about this. I prayed for each and every one of you on this commission. And we want to keep this agriculture, forestry, just like it is now. Uh, I believe these young men, we have nothing against them. I believe that they bought this building and was told that it was, had a, a business in it. But they didn't do their homework to find out whether they could run a regular business out of it. It was on a church, which is nonprofit. But we'd like, there's a lot of people down there that can't be here today because they're working. I've talked to a lot of them and they don't want to change this, they want to keep it. We have a nice, quiet community. And like I said, we have nothing against these people, they're, they're good people. But I think they just made a mistake when they went to put this business in down there. So we would just like for y'all to keep it as it is. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Lynn Esslinger, I live at 1703 Sim Goodwin Road. Um, my property is behind theirs, so, and I actually see this property that we're talking about and discussing today is just a few acres separating mine from theirs. You know, we're at the very, very south end of Bradley County. And it has been blessedly, um, historically classified as only residential and agricultural and forestry. And all of us want to keep it that way. It is hard to find locations that are rural where you have your horses and cattle and chicken. And this is still like this. And traditionally, Southern, um, Bradley County is supposed to remain this way. And, um, and, and once we start allowing encroachment to change into businesses, then it's, it's, it's a very fast sliding slope. All of us were willing to make a one-time exception for their case. But apparently, um, the board here does not want to do that. Which means that they can turn retail and whoever they sell to can return, can turn retail. For small country roads, it's hard to pass each other. And we don't need more businesses and more cars. And most of all, we just need to keep it, this quadrant farmland, which is basically what it is. So I am, I am very sincerely and respectfully asking to please, please keep this farmland, because once you change it, it's going to change everything around. It will not be assimilation, it will be, will spread. So please, keep this in mind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much, anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Hills. I live at 1106 Pine Hill Road. Our property has a boundary on Pine Hill Road and on Sim Goodwin Road. And at the top, we look, uh, we can see this particular location. My wife and I own the farm, Hidden Hills Farm and Saddle Club. And, um, ever since I was a kid, you drive by that building that we're talking about right there. It's a large building, it's already there. Uh, there's a large parking lot beside the building. Um, they've been selling bibles, tracks, tapes, CDs out of that building for forty years, maybe. You guys may know better than I do. But this is, when, when I look at this and says it's forestry, agriculture, and residential, uh, there's no forestry there already. It's a big lot, open lot with a big building and a big parking lot. There's no agriculture on there. What I would hate to see personally is, um, to have somebody turn that into, uh, low-income housing or split that thing up and make it a bunch of, um, residential units. It's been worked as building for so long. I would like to keep it as it is. And, um, and allow for it to be, um, as commercial.
Very much. Comments? Anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Jonah Tyree. I'm one of the owners of the building. Question today. I have pictures of it. If anybody would like to see, I'd be happy to approach and hand those out. All right, I'll do that right now. I know we've belabored this point over the past few meetings, so I'll try to keep this short, but I just wanted to summarize. Like, uh, like our neighbor here said, the building's been on this location for forty-one years, and it's been used to, to sell things out of. It's been used for offices and for shipping. Um, and all we're simply asking is to continue to use the building for the way that it's been used for the past forty-one years. Uh, our neighbors over here in opposition are correct. We did not realize when we bought the building that the previous owners were exempt from Bradley County zoning laws. And now we're just trying to make sure we do the right thing and get it rezoned so we can operate it within the bounds of Bradley County. I'd just like to illustrate that we are a small company. We have five employees, as you'll see on that, uh, that picture. You can see the five employees' cars, as well as mine and my business partner's out front. Um, and that's all the traffic that we're adding to this area. Many of our employees live in Bradley County. Two of them are my own family members. And, uh, and so this building has ample space for us to grow. We're not planning to build anything here. Just wanting, like I said, continue using it in the same way that it's been used for forty-one years. And finally, you know, we've had some neighbors that have been vocal about opposition, but I'd just like to offer a chance for our Bradley County neighbors that are in support of this, if you guys wouldn't mind standing, just to demonstrate all of those in favor in Bradley County. And then anyone not in Bradley County, you're also welcome to stand. But then finally, I just wanted to illustrate that the planning commission recommended this rezoning six to one. And so for that reason, I asked respectfully that y'all would vote yes on this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Any comments?
I should know that.
Say.
One, okay.
Anyone else like to speak? Commissioner Gilbert?
I went down to this building where these guys operate their building out of. I was wondering what they're operating. So I went in and they had offices, quite a few of them, and they've been really making it nice. Then he took me back into the back and showed me a TV thing where they do videos. Most of their stuff is sold online. And then he took me in the back and showed me where they put together orders. So what this building is, is a place where they got offices for the people up front, and then they go back and they do videos. And then with them videos, they sell their products. And their products are caps, little caps that go over flashlights, scopes. Whoever come up with it had a good idea. It's pretty good. And, uh, when I was there, there was one FedEx truck came in and that FedEx truck picked up and dropped off and left. And there wasn't a whole lot of, uh, traffic in and out. The building looked very nice. But I told y'all folks that I would vote the way you wanted to vote, and I asked you to pray about it. And if you're still against it, I'm gonna have to vote no. Are you still against it? Are you, sir?
How about the ones on the right that are for it?
I understand about the ones on the right, boys. And, and me and the boys got together and talked. And we, I told these guys here, if they could come up with a way of, the number one thing these guys don't want, they don't want it to be turned into big resident, or big commercial. They don't want it with these boys get a big business up and then be able to sell this business. I mean, that's part of democracy. That's what we do. And, uh, but they don't want them to be able to, to bring bigger businesses in, then later on down the line, just because they got to move in another, business moves in beside them by buying another piece of property and having it turned to commercial. And, uh,
Oh, it's gotta come through, Chairman. Wait, he has to come through here.
Come up to the.
Please, sir.
We discussed that after that last meeting. And they told us that they would get back with us. We asked them, you know, we don't care if they're being down there, because they're good, they're good neighbors. They're, they're fine men. We, we know the family. We know their dad. Their dad was our vet for many years. So we're not against these kids. But what we don't want is for them to come down there and to run this business. And maybe some big corporation come in and say, well, we're gonna buy you out and buy them out, and then we've got to put up with somebody else with a big deal. That's our problem. You know, if they're gonna keep it as a mail-order thing, that ain't no problem. It's just the fact of what we don't know will come there after this. And you know as well as I do. When, you know, a small business starts and some big corporation sees it, and they can make more money out of it, they're gonna come in, they're gonna offer them a lot of money, and then here they're gonna go, and then here we have it. That's our complaint about this. It's not against them. If you can keep it like it is without rezoning it, which there's a lot of homes that's running mail-order business out of their homes, and they're not rezoned. There's stuff all over Facebook. He's got a thing on Facebook where he goes through and shows the whole building. Shows where their desks are gonna be, where their, their supplies are gonna be. And then at the end of it, he says anybody that's welcome to come join us. So he's advertising for people to come join him to make it bigger. It's on, it's on Facebook. I pulled it up. But, you know, we just don't want this thing to get out of control. We want to keep it family and farms. But then there are forty-something years. That's why I bought it. That's why the rest of us are down there. And like I said, there's a lot of people that don't want it. It's at work today that can't be here. So that's all I got to say.
I said I would vote with the majority, so.
That was fair. He asked for a, a, uh, a contract. They said if they sold it, that they would put it back to agriculture. But I don't see why you have to change it, because you, you got people all over this country running businesses out of their house, selling stuff online like they're gonna do. So why change it?
He said, but, listen, he said that he could not get that done at the moment, but he would give you a handshake saying that it would do that. That he would not.
There, again, you know, your handshake's as good as your word.
That's what I'm saying.
And you don't have any people that, that go back on the word this day and time. A handshake deal is just almost, you know, unbelievable.
Thank you. Commissioner Winters, please.
Could I speak to you a minute? Bring you back. No, speaking, yeah, please. Uh, you've been a good neighbor to this point to these folk, correct?
Yes, sir. I've tried our hardest.
And as you, as you do this, you're gonna still be a good neighbor, I assume. And you, you know, this is America. You can expand if you want to expand. But when you do, you're gonna harm those people that you have, had invested in. So you've said at this point that you're gonna keep this a growing business. And then you have to rely on the zoning group to look at whether you're gonna bring in a big corporation in here that they're talking about anyway. I mean, nobody's looking here at this point at a large corporation coming into the farmer, farming area. And that's a challenge we have here. You know, this is, this is a lot of growth going on. There's a lot of development out there. People want to take property development for their own future in America. It is America. But you've shared with these folks that you're gonna be a good neighbor. That's what I want you, that's what. And, and being a good neighbor and doing your business, how are you gonna do that?
And if it, if it helps as far as, I mean, we've tried to figure out a way to, um, lay there our neighbors' concerns about us staying. Um, I grew up in this area.
Right.
And I just recently moved, uh, closer to this area so I could be close to this building that we could work at. I bought a house so that I could be close to that building, as well as, uh, my parents. And so, uh, this building was something we've saved up for, for many years, to be able to have a place that we could operate out of. We are setting down roots right here in McDonald. And, um, you know, y'all have admitted that we've been very good neighbors, and I promise we're gonna continue to do so and keep the property clean and take care of it and, and be quiet as we can. Like I said, there's only five employees here. And even in, in the rezoning, we've only requested rezoning for the actual building and the parking lots, not even the whole thing. And we've chosen the most restrictive zoning that'll allow us to continue just to operate in this building. And like you see, it's a, it's a big parking lot that's mostly empty because we're a small business and we're just trying to, you know, get our start and keep going, so.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Yes, please.
Hello, my name, my name is Carla Phillips, and I'm on seven ninety Pine Hill Road. My property does not adjoin this, but we're within a mile of this property. And this building, if they, if they can't run their business out of it and have to sell it, we're not guaranteed who else might try to pick up this building, because it is a large building for intended purposes of a business operating out of it. Even though it was a nonprofit that operated out of it previously and didn't require rezoning, there will still be another entity coming in to want to utilize that building in this way. And so it would probably have to come back to you again. Because otherwise, the only other option is to tear down the building and return the property to an agricultural status completely, which is very costly. So I would be in favor of being a neighbor of this to go ahead and allow them to utilize the building. They're only asking for the rezoning for a very small part of it. And not allow the building to go over to a different entity that might be more difficult to work with. And, or allow the building to set and become derelict, which can be a really negative impact on a community as well. So I would just want to say that I'm in favor of, of this rezoning. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
No.
If we, if we spoken now, we, we, we spoke. I've been through the building about thirty years ago, and it, it wasn't no barn when I went through it, I can assure you.
How did the planning commission vote on this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the planning commission passed it six to one. Is that six to one?
Anyone else? The public hearing is now closed. If there's no further discussion, call, call the rule.
Alfred?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Twelve in favor, one opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, which one did we? Agenda item F, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to rezone from forestry, agriculture, residential district to mobile home park and travel trailer park, R four district property, located at water level highway and identified by tax map zero five nine parcel zero six two dot zero zero. You can see this on pages twelve and thirteen, uh, of your agenda packet. I place this in form of motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. We will now enter into a public hearing regarding this rezoning request. When you are recognized, please keep your remarks germane to the resolution at hand. If there's anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this request. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against the request? There being no one, the public hearing is now closed. If there is no further discussion.
Mr., Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This, uh, this resolution did not pass, did not pass the planning commission.
What was the vote on the?
I think unanimous, unanimously against.
Okay.
Why, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Why did the planning commission deny this request?
So the request, give me one second, Commissioners Slater. The request, the request was made to input sixty, I think it was sixty units. Sixty what? Sixty-four quadplexes on this property along with, or sixty quadplexes on this property along with sixty-four proposed campground spots. And it was believed that the, the building, the land, and Bentley can give you more clarification for it, but it did not meet the requirements of, this property did not meet the requirements of that.
Is the property owner here today?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A question real quick, just for clarification. A yes vote would approve the denial? Is that correct, or do we need to vote no to deny it?
Can you have some clarity on that, please?
Uh, sure. We, we decided a long time ago because it got confusing that we would, it's almost a double negative if you, so this is written that if you vote for it, you're approving it to rezone. So if you want to not approve it to be rezoned, you would, it's a no vote. If you want to approve the rezoning, it is a yes vote. And we have consistently done that, I'd say for probably about ten years now, because it got so confusing when we did negatives, which is the way we did it for a while. When planning commission voted it down, we did it in the, the negative, but that got extremely confusing. So that's why we now do it this way. So, does anybody have any questions about that?
Any, any other comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One quick question. Crystal, what happens if this does get denied? Do they, they start all over, or?
They can't use the property of, with the way they've, they've planned. They could go back and look at things that they can do consistent with the current zoning, or, or they could submit a different plan with a different type of rezoning, but they would not be allowed to do the plan as they've submitted.
So that's what I was thinking. So this has been denied from planning on a, I guess, a technical, they, I mean, you check out the boxes, they didn't hit them all, so.
It, it was mainly the access of the property and then also the development of the property. It is said to be that the property was covered in springs and also, I believe, used to be like a, a minnow farm back in the day, and that to be able to have to grade all of this. They also spoke about a sewer connection for the said property for the, trying to do math real quick, like two hundred and forty units, is that what it was, of the quadplexes? Uh, because it was four to sixty quadplexes, and there's four each. That, they were worried about having sewer capacity, uh, as well with a moratorium on additional taps.
I don't think there's much you can do about the spring. That's never gonna change. But the other stuff, I mean, did you tell him what he has to do in order to be in compliance?
I did. I mean, he, he had a civil engineer there, and they hadn't did any work on the property at all yet. I don't even know if they could do the, the plan that they were wanting to do.
But yes, he has to go back to drawing board. Uh, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
That property, yours mine, in case you want to know. But anyway, there's this three-foot tile that comes under the road that drains all the water from sixty-four, into the road, and all the way up sixty-four that comes across and comes out of that pipe. It's wetland, folk. That's what it is. I've been here before when there's wetland, brought up. If you don't believe it, just go out there and wait in it a little bit. You'll find out. But when it rains, I, it, it's, uh, there's water stands there all the time. My property line goes to the middle of that stream. And water's there year-round. So they gotta, they gotta figure that out, too, if it's wetland or not wetland, but if it's not, if it's not, well, I know from now on how to vote on wetland. Because it is wetland out there. And, uh, those neighbors out there don't, I don't know anybody that out there wants it, and I live right there next to it.
Any other comments? Call the rule, please.
Alfred?
No.
Cry?
No.
Blake?
No.
Collins?
No.
Gilbert?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Goins?
No.
Slater?
No.
Ledford?
No.
Rogers?
No.
Winters?
No.
Beatty?
No.
Hughes?
No.
Anyone wish to change their vote? There's none in favor, thirteen opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item G, Commissioner Rogers.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a motion to approve the request to close the right-of-way located at one five three Cursi Road Northeast. You can see this on page fifteen and sixteen, or sorry, fourteen through sixteen of your agenda packet. I place this in form of a motion.
Do I have a second? Second, Commissioner Slater. We will now enter into a public hearing regarding.
Mr. Chairman, we don't, we don't need a public hearing for this.
Oh, okay. Any comments? Go ahead and call the rule, please.
Alfred?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and none opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. We'll now move along to communication from the audience. I'll recognize and allow five minutes to anyone that wishes to speak. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? In, uh, the upcoming events, farmers on first, July the twenty-seventh, eleven AM to two PM, First Street Square, Main Street Cleveland Luncheon, July the twenty-eighth, noon at the Museum Center. And, uh, congratulations to our mayor, new mayor today. I'll say one thing, she's a lot better looking than the existing mayor.
That is true.
And if we could get the banner to get us a picture with her before you leave, could.